Now you're on.
Okay, welcome everyone to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Breyer City Workshop. See a Breyer Workshop. Uh, let's see here. I'm doing two things at once. First on our agenda is the rule of minutes of uh. May ten, twenty twenty-two. Any comments about that? All right, hearing none. All right, thanks. Move on to review.
Forward.
A State of Dreams Developer Extension Agreement tonight. Our city planner Jennifer is with us. Welcome, Jennifer.
Jennifer.
He's not a second.
Late today, the coordination has failed me. So, yeah, so this is the proposed developer's extension agreement for a sewer extension associated with the Estate of Dreams subdivision, file number sub twenty-one dash oh one. So tonight, take a look at this agreement and it will come back to you on a future meeting for consideration of approving the mayor's signature on the agreement. This is a subdivision for the property at two, 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 one, five Breyer Road. They received preliminary approval on September eighth, twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. And this agreement would authorize and provide the various conditions associated with extending that sewer and then the ultimate acceptance of the city of the sewer line when the subdivision is complete and the Public Works Department has signed off on all aspects of the extension. The agreement was reviewed by planning, public works, as well as the city engineer. This was sort of reviewed by you already when you authorized Resolution five seventy-eight, which granted preliminary approval and required that a developer extension agreement be provided. So this agreement outlines the bonding and other responsibilities.
Jennifer, what the guy was trying to, we have, there's the cash deposit. I know we have bonds and all that. But the cash deposit is kind of interesting because it's, we're saying it's a dollar per foot. Do I have that right? Up with a minimum of two fifty. And if you read what it says, why? Two hundred, that, I mean, for the number of feet he's got, it's not really going to do much to ensure the company against that deposit really isn't much of anything, right?
I would agree with that. And it's one of the things that, you know, this was language provided by the attorney when they developed this. And when I have a minute to take this back to them, to have them, you know, update it, that will probably be something we would just take out because they'll be providing the bonds and.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because the bond numbers look pretty good from that perspective. So I was like, I didn't like, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, the bonds are based off of estimates provided there by their engineer and then our engineer reviews and you know, provides input into that.
Okay, anything else on that developer extension agreement?
No, it's pretty good.
All right, moving on to item number three, review and discuss right away. Use agreement for the fence for adjoining neighbors Dunaway and Sailor located at two, one, nine, oh, eight and two, one, nine, ten, thirty-fourth Avenue West. Jennifer, take it away.
I am actually not familiar with that. Paula, take it away.
I'm the one who's got that one. So, everybody remember Silverberg?
One more time, what was that?
Everybody remembers Silverberg?
No, not everyone.
Properties that are over by Timbervale that, yeah, it went to court and the court deemed that the uh, they made the lots legal lots. And so the lots sit up here on this slope. And then there is a unused right of way that we have. And then there's the next group of homeowners. Two of those homeowners wanted to put up fences going across that right of way because they own the property that used to be part of Silver, Silverberg. They purchased it so that nobody could build above them. And so they just wanted to be able to go in there. We've done these kind of things with other people where we let them build a shed within an easement or a right of way or something that we are not actively using. We have encouraged them along with the other people who are involved in those properties that they petition the city for us to vacate the right of way. And hopefully they'll come forward at some point and do that. But really this takes the burden of us having to do any maintenance in those areas where they're putting up these fences because once those fences are up there, we're not going through them to clear anything. And so it's solely the property owner's responsibility to keep those clear.
Are they really talking about thirty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, because the property address is on thirty-fourth, but it's the backside of the estate property on thirty-sixth, right? Yes.
And something, something like this really doesn't come up that often as I can remember. I mean, what do you think, Martin?
Uh, you know, like maybe occasionally, but it's not terribly common. This is one where, yeah, they were able to, usually the right of way has already been agreed to due to doing a development. In this case, they acquired the land to secure it so nobody could develop it. So I think that part's a little bit unique from what we've seen, I think, in other ones. Certainly, uh, there can be other easements the city has for swales and other sewer lines along backsides of property that people may ask to put fences on, but know that they're going to maybe lose their fence. Well, if any construction work has to be done on a sewer line or such.
And this is a real weird chunk of street.
Yeah.
That's a whole, the whole area.
Yeah, it's a, it's a deep grade. We gotta get out of dealing with it.
And they're just putting up like a, like a rule of like a farm type, uh, you know, fence.
That's what I was wondering about. I mean, my, kind of my thing was really, I mean, ultimately, it says it's easier to take down. But honestly, you put four by fours, even if they're in concrete, you take the panel sections out. If you have to take a post out, you pull a post. I'm not sure T bars and that, and frankly, that looks horrible. So.
Martin, the cost of wood right now.
Well, I know, but are we saying?
Build a fence.
Yeah, but my question was, are we, are we asking them to build that way? They're saying that's the minimum of what they have to do.
I didn't know either. I was wondering.
That's, that is their.
Yeah, that's on request.
Yeah, that was.
Okay, I was just trying to, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I certainly appreciate, believe me, I understand the cost, but um, okay.
Yeah, so this just helps us get out of.
Yes.
Yeah. You already, we're not imposing, if that's what they want to do.
Us lives, no, these go away.
We're having trouble maintaining our parks, you know, we don't, yes.
Yeah, it's a screwy location without a doubt.
Yeah, we have a few of those.
Could, all right, could neighbors object to just the cosmetic appearance of the fence? Could they, could they raise as, as an issue?
No, because the neighbor, nobody else is going to be seeing.
It's pretty much the two of them.
And then the other question is, are these rights transferable? So if these homeowners sell their homes as the right of way, then transferable to the new owner?
Well, so they, they're not getting the right of way. They just have the right to put the fence up. And we have the right that if we had some reason to go in there to knock that fence down and they'll have to pay to put it back up. Like I said, we're hoping that they're going to come forward because we encouraged them to petition the city to vacate that right of way. And we're hoping that they'll get the other two parties that are involved to jump on that with them and then petition us for that. And then, once they do that, the right of way is split between the two properties that abut it on either side. And then it becomes all of their problem and we don't ever have to look at it and deal with it again.
We never know. I mean, something I didn't ask, and I honestly don't remember what the rationale, how that ended up being an easement in there?
That's a great question that none of us know.
Yeah, I, for the life of me, I mean, I can't, I remember when Timbervale wasn't built. I remember the property next door and all of that. And then this thing just kind of seemed to carve out and I was like.
Somebody, when all the designing was done of the different pieces of that area, thought that, oh, we'll need a road here someday. And everybody else went, nah.
And it may have been gritted out on the original layout of the, the whole area. Who knows where it came from, but.
Well, Carlson owned a bunch of that property, you know, where Carlson, he owned and he sold the back countryside one first and the other. And I don't, that little notch where that house is to the, well, if you're looking at the exhibit, it's the left side, it's to the west. That was in there, they were there, but then everything else was carved. So, yeah, it's kind of gone through an interesting.
I have one question. Once, like you say, they will take over this property, will they be taxed on it?
Yes.
Yes.
It will get added to their property taxes.
Okay, fair enough, fair as much.
The assessor will deem.
Yeah.
Unbuild whatever, whatever, yeah.
I got it.
Assessors are busy right now, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
We have to vacate it though for that to happen.
Yes. Do they know that then? Do they know that they're going to have a, a new tax?
Yes.
They do know.
Well, for this, they won't be taxed. It's if they come and petition the city to vacate the right of way and give them the right of way, then they would be taxed on the additional portion of the right of way that would be added to their property.
Right.
You get dirt, you get taxed, right?
Kind of.
All right.
Or blackberries, it works out the same.
Is there ever an intent to have a path there, maybe?
No.
Further south.
Yeah.
Was it originally designed for Egress, probably, or possibly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And twenty-ninth is a, is one like you are coming about down and said, it could be a path on twenty-ninth. But this one did end thirty-six, just goes nowhere.
Okay, I couldn't tell on the map if it tied in, but.
Yeah.
Not.
All right. Thank you, Paula.
Yep.
There's nothing else on that. We'll move on to item number four, discuss with South County Regional Fire Authority. This is a topic that is a significant topic to our city. We've talked about it before. And so tonight with us, we have Deputy Chief Eastman, and he's got some partners there that he's going to introduce. And obviously, this is a time again for us to get familiar with the, the fact that our contract is eventually going to come to an end and we need to come up with a, it's a complicated issue, costly issue, significant issue. And that's why we're going to take as many meetings as we need to, to get this discussed so that everyone's comfortable with what's happening. Tonight in your packet, you received information with respect to further information with respect to Regional Fire Authority option. And I want to welcome Bob to the meeting and he can introduce who he's got with him.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I think the, you, you've met these individuals before. Leslie Hines, who I think most of you are familiar with, is our PIO. And, and a resident of Breyer. And then Chief Maxwell, he's one of my counterparts. He's a deputy chief. Oversees the EMS division, which includes the community resource paramedics. And he's again with us tonight. And again, thanks for, thanks for having us to, to continue the conversation. We did put a PowerPoint. And I believe Paula went in the packet. And, and for, for some, you've seen it before. When we met last time, we kind of, you know, gave you a whole lot of, a flash photo flood of information. And some of it's repeat, and some of it's just additional, seeing it again, some of the, some of the topics specifically like the benefit charge. Some of the impacts, if the city were to annex into the RFA, what does that mean for your taxing ability? And, and some of those things I think are important to make sure that everybody understands. And though we, we, we were together and I think we, we were, had the privilege of being with you for about an hour and a half last time. I, I want to make sure that we, we don't miss anything and that the, that the council has the information. And, and we can get it to you and so you can make informed decisions as you move forward. As you know, the, the two agencies have been partnered since two thousand and five formally. But it started prior to that. We've had the privilege of having a great relationship with the city of Breyer and I'm see that continuing for many more years. And so I think with that, I'll move on to the PowerPoint and, and I do. I think it's important that we go over a handful of things again, and then I'll get the PowerPoint off so we can, we can just have a discussion and, and take questions from the council and address them. And if, if for some reason we don't have the answer, we can bring it back or get the information to either Paul or the mayor to disseminate back to the council. And as always, we're willing to come back and, and talk to you as, as often, as frequently as you need as we, as we talk about this topic. Paula, do I have screen share abilities?
Yep, go. You're, you're free to share.
All right, does everybody see? The main screen?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm running dual screens and sometimes when I do this, you don't get to see the, the PowerPoint, you see something else. So obviously, we're, we're here to just to give you another quick overview and then, and then maybe some deep dives and some questions that the council has. Again, this is a slide we showed you before about some of the increases that the RFA has done since two thousand and seventeen. And we've increased staff over the years across the, across the RFA, understanding that, that we have the flexibility to do that in the RFA. We're, we're limited based on the current contract agreements that we have with, with the city of Edmonds, Mount Lake Terrace and Breyer. Though those changes are, where it's less nimble to make those changes as it requires adjustments to the contract. Here's an update. I think we talked about this last time we were here. As of, as of the first of March, the city of Edmonds added two additional firefighters to their daily staffing. And so you see an additional two firefighters on duty every day. And, and for those of you who know where Station Twenty is in the Esperance area, we put on a two-person transport unit out of Station Twenty in Esperance to help with the increased call demand and some of the other, some of the other metrics that we have with the city of Edmonds. And, and it's a, it's a benefit it, it provides where Malt Lake Terrace and Station nineteen and Station eighteen, eighteen being Breyer Station, adds a resource in the city of Edmonds that we don't have to pull Station nineteen, Station eighteen to cover some of that call demand in Edmonds. We added the resource to cover some of that increased call demand. And we expect to see that Station nineteen and Station eighteen stay in their respective service areas. Have an increase in that. And obviously, that's beneficial to both the city of Breyer and the city of Malt Lake Terrace. Financials, this is an important one. And, and you've seen this before, it just shows what our revenue streams are and what our expenses are. It shows what we amended our twenty-twenty-one budget for, it shows what our twenty-twenty-two budget is as adopted. And we look at our reserve accounts, and this is important. And the reason I, I, I put this back in and is it's important for the council to know that our reserve funds are funded through our property tax straight up. So when the property tax comes in, we fund the reserve accounts. It doesn't go through the general fund and then to the reserve account. So if you look at the expenditures, apparatus, right now, we have about one point six million of apparatus being purchased this year. We have about one point two million of equipment being purchased this year. And, and then if you look at our compensated absence, left one and self-insurance plans, these are all funds. Self-insurance obviously has insurance premiums put into that. But the other ones are funded through our revenue stream. The RFA does not run those in the general fund and then use those expenditures. They go directly into our reserve account. So I think that provides just, I want to make sure everybody knows that's how we do that. And so when you look at our annual operational cost for the RFA, you have our, our day-to-day general fund operations, which is, is revenue in or revenue out. And then, and then the additional expenditures that come out of our reserve accounts, you see in, in, in the slide that you're seeing now. So if you're looking at what the RFA spends annually for their operations, you can see the day-to-day MNO operations and then you can see the capital expenses as well. What was that? Sorry. So I just wanted to, to just highlight that and make sure the council understood that. The benefit charge.
Bob, Bob?
Yes.
Hi. May I interrupt and ask a question? Or did you want to save questions till the end?
No, go ahead. Let's go as we go.
Go to the previous financial slide.
The one with.
With your revenue and your cost of maintenance and ops. So it's the slide previous to this one? Oh, there we go. There we go. So total revenue is seventy-six billion in twenty-twenty-two budget. Forty-five point seven million is property taxes. Which jurisdiction are contributing those, that, that property tax revenue?
City of Lindwood and unincorporated Snowmish County in the RFA. So that's only within the RFA.
Okay, so, and then the service contracts is Breyer plus Edmonds and Mount Lake Terrace that are paying independent of the amount collected from property taxes. Okay.
Yeah, so because we don't have authority to, to tax, to collect property taxes in the respective contract cities.
Right.
The other thing is, is under service contracts, we have a fire marshal's agreement with the city of Lindwood.
Right.
That's also part of the, the service contract revenue stream.
Okay, so then your total expenses, seventy-six million, seventy-six point two million is, is the entirety. That's labor, maintenance operations, and it's also money that you're, you're holding in reserve for future investments such as buying equipment, et cetera. Is that, is that correct?
No, so, so that, that revenue stream comes in. The, the revenue that goes into the reserve accounts go directly from tax collection into the reserve accounts. So, so for instance, we take six percent of our property tax and that funds the apparatus and equipment reserve and doesn't go into the general ledger or the general budget, if that makes sense.
Okay, so that.
I know people, I know people do that differently.
Okay, six percent of that forty-five point seven million then from Lindwood and unincorporated is going into your, your, your reserve, right?
Nope, they take the, the revenue that comes in from property taxes. The, the, if we go to the next one. So the beginning cash, the property tax revenue, if you see where it says property tax revenue.
Yes.
So one point four million of property tax revenue is going in apparatus.
Right.
Five hundred and seventeen thousands going into equipment to a total of one point nine. And then property tax, if you look into left, into compensated absences and revenue comes off the top. So it goes into those accounts directly from property tax and then the remainders in the general fund.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any more questions, Councilman?
No, that's good. I've got a few. As we, as we, as we move on, I have a few others, but yeah, that was good. Thank you.
So the benefit charge, this is just what the benefit charge is and what it isn't. It's new and, and I, I want to make sure that, that people understand what the benefit charge is and what it isn't. It's, it's not a tax. It's a, it's a charge based on improvements to property. And it's, there's a limitation. It's, it's limited to six percent of the operating budget. As a result of us being able to do the benefit charges as a positive vote from the voters that we forfeit the third fifty cents of our fire levy or a general levy and it drops to a dollar. Our current benefit charge initially, because it's the first time we, we have it, it's good for six years. It has to be revalidated or renewed, very similar to your EMS levy. And we can renew at six or ten years at a simple majority. And recent changes to the legislature, we can renew it at a permanent. In other words, so we don't have to go up back out and ever revalidate it or renew it and it, but that requires a sixty percent majority for pass. And there is no validation requirement associated with the benefit charge. And then the benefit charge is, is based on improvements to the property. So the land itself doesn't, is not part of the benefit charges based on your improvements. So structures on the property. The benefit charge is set by the board annually, and the benefits must be, must be measurable. That's based on the statute. And it's requires a public hearing prior to the benefit charge being set. Any questions on the benefit charge? I know that's one that's fairly new and it's not, it's not widely used across the state. So I guess I'll pause there if there's any questions specifically to the benefit charge.
Is the sixty percent per service area or system wide?
So for us, obviously, or it's for the, the RFA as a whole. So right now, when if we go and renew the benefit charge, it will be with, as it, as the RFA currently sits, it will be with unincorporated area, city of Lindwood, and now with the positive vote, the city of Mill Creek. And it's, I think we have to go out by twenty-twenty-five because we were in our, in our second year and it's good for six years. Once again, we can't, we can't impose a benefit charge on our current contract cities. We don't have taxing authority through, we just, we basically have just the contractual agreement between RFA and the city provide the service.
If I, if I'm understanding the benefit charge, I'm, I'm looking at it as kind of a premium. So if I'm a, if I'm an Alderwood mall, if I'm a nursing home, if I'm a gas station with high hazardous materials, I'm contributing through property taxes to the RFA that's being collected off my property taxes. But there's a benefit charge then that would be attributed to my facility because of the fact that I have perhaps higher risk. I have a higher population of individuals and that benefit charge would be individualized based on an inventory of all the, the high-risk structures or high-population structures within a jurisdiction. Is that how that works?
So it's, it's based on square footage. So, so currently, the way or the RFA does the benefit charge is based on the square footage. So the size, so it doesn't, it doesn't take into account specific, like for instance, nursing homes, it doesn't take into account as of right now anyway, how many residents the nursing home has. It identifies nursing home as a commercial structure and then the size of the structure. And then, and then there's a a calculation made and then, and then the proportion of the benefit charge aside to that class of structure. And then the benefit charge is done individually for property class through the, the formulary that we showed previously. I did, I have it at the end of the slide. I didn't.
Yeah.
I just bring it in the slide. So, so it doesn't necessarily say that commercial building A is, is fifty-two hundred, fifty-two thousand square feet and is high mercantile, right? And then you've got a fifty-two thousand square feet structure that's storing a whole bunch of hazmat per se. Those get treated the same right now. Part of that has to do with the fact that, that the data, we get the, the, the data for the benefit charge right now through the county. So if we wanted to get where we wanted to have a, a, a factor of to, to be able to look at high occupancy for whatever the reason, whether it's a nursing home for fire risk and resources needed to mitigate, do rescue and all that. We have to have accurate data at the county to be able to incorporate. And then we'd have to adjust the formulary to account for that. Most, actually, I know right now, nobody that's doing the benefit charge in the state is going to that detail because the data is really not readily available because I think we'll transition to some of those, some of that in time as the county's assessor data gets more information in it and the ability to rely on that information, it's accurate, to then be able to add those conditions as part of factors associated with the improvements to the property. So the, the flexibility to, to do that is there. The challenge is, is to have the data set such that the information is reliable and you can be fair across the whole, in this case, the RFAs where we're imposing the benefit charge. That's one of the challenges. So for instance, one of the things that, that. That's one of the challenges. So for instance, one of the things that that the RFA would love to be able to do. Is for residential sprinkler properties to give it a discount, right? For or sprinkled square footage or multifamily and commercial, we give a ten percent um, reduction. We can't do that for residential properties because the county doesn't collect that data. So there's no, there's no place for me to start and there's. We've been very fortunate in in some areas like Linwood have residential sprinklers ordinance in places and have them play. The problem is, is we don't have the data in a place where I can fairly do that. Um, within the RFA yet. I think we're working on getting that to happen and as. I think cities and 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 our contract cities included have looked at um, sprinkle ordinances at some level. Um, and I think in time we'll be able to give a credit. We just won't be able to do it until the county data is.
Yeah.
Um, where it needs to be for us to be able to do that. So I hope that helps a little bit.
It does, it, but could you also clarify the the last bullet in your slide, benefits must be measurable? What what does that mean?
So so um, you, there has to be a rationale behind how you're proportioning. The benefit charge, so. Um, for instance, we take um, the square footage, we start. Um, with, um, we take the total square footage within the RFA. And then we say, here's the total. And then we say, how much of that square footage is residential? How much of that square footage is commercial? How much of that square footage is multifamily and mobile home? And start with that proportioning of the benefit charge. Then we go and look at call demand and time on task and realize that your residential. If we have fires in residential properties, we tend to have less resources committed for a shorter amount of time.
Okay.
And then your multifamily and commercial tend to have greater resources committed for a longer period of time. And we have more resources needed to go. Um, and we we follow that up by um, our commercial responses get more resources at initial dispatch. Than our residential properties and so um, we then fine tune. And move some of the residential proportioning to commercial and multifamily as a result of the weight of response. Um, and the duration time on task when there is a fire um, to the commercial and multifamily over the residential. So I can go show you how we did that um, as a means of being measurable. In other words. Um, y- you can't just say we're going to charge ten percent on residential and everything else on commercial. And and say, because I say so, you got to be able to point to something and say, what's the basis?
Right.
How you're doing and proportioning the benefit charge.
Okay.
I was like, what also I had pulled down the uh, the South County Fire Benefit Charge Formula, by the way, is online if people are interested. So you can see how it's residential, mobile home, multifamily, and then all the breakout of commercial. Uh, I wanted to ask a couple of questions and pack a thing, just to make sure I'm totally tracked. So first of all, I was curious. Why uh? It's important that you're calling out that the fire benefit charge is not a tax. What what is the important uh, nuance that you see as to make that clarified that for folks?
So I'll go to the next slide. So this is the reason. So if we were traditional, so so cities. And I believe the city of Breyer is part of the library district, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so as a result of that, the city has a statutory limit of three dollars and sixty cents per thousand. That they can levy for property tax. Right? And because if the library district was at its full fifty cents. The city forfeits or or becomes junior, senior, however, in other words, if the library is at fifty cents. The city can go to three dollars and ten cents. Which be then becomes, if the library is at its max levy rate, that's as high as the city can go to stay within the three sixty statutory limit. So the reason we talk about the benefit charge from my perspective is is that for a city, if a city annexes into the RFA. If we did not have a benefit charge. I would be using the traditional fire levy that could be up to a dollar fifty. If I am at a dollar fifty per thousand, the library is at two dollars per thousand. It limits the city to a dollar sixty per thousand, which would be the max that they would be able to char or levy on property tax. Because the the, because the benefit charge is a is a fee, it's not a tax. And we forfeit the third fifty cents. For the RFA now, our levy is at a dollar. So our dollar then becomes. What gets reduced if we're at our full dollar from the city statutory limit, which puts the city. If you are in the RFA, the library is at fifty cents. The the RFAs at a dollar, the city's max is two dollars and ten cents. That's why that's all important, because because of the way. And 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 I'm not sure where all your revenue streams are within the city. I don't know, um.
There ain't a lot.
But but that's why it's important to, it's important. Um, as part of this conversation to realize that if the city were to annex into the RFA. You and we're at a dollar and the library is a fifty cents, you're, you you can only go after two dollars and set ten cents of property tax.
Right, right, because fifty cents comes off.
Right, so but and if you if we're not at our dollar and you go to two twenty. Because we're only at ninety cents, you can do that, but if we go to a dollar, you automatically drop down to two ten.
Right.
If you go, let's say, we didn't have the benefit charge, then you're at a dollar sixty because a dollar fifty becomes senior to your. Property tax, if that makes sense. That's why it's important to know the difference.
All right, uh, all right. So then back on the prior slide, uh, the next one was the third bullet, where you talked about the limited. I want to make sure I had these numbers right when I was looking at this and I dumped a bunch of this into a spreadsheet, but. Um, it it says limited to sixty percent of the operating budget and then it says twenty twenty two, seven point six four percent. So I want to make sure we unpack what sixty percent of the, how we get to the seven point six four, what is sixty percent of the operating budget? I just want to make sure that I was understanding those numbers.
So, so the benefit charge for twenty twenty two and it's just over five point eight million. Is what the benefit charge amount was, it's just over that. Equates to seven point six four percent of the operating budget for twenty twenty two, the benefit charge. Is seven point six two percent of the budget or seven six four percent of the benefit.
Alright, so five point, make sure I show that five point eight million. When you're looking at is, when you, operating budget, that is all three funds?
Seventy six, I I'd have to go back and 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 look um, to ensure. Um, but if you looked at the seventy six million.
Right.
Um, and took the benefit charge of five point eight and did the math, you'd come to seven point six four. And if you.
So it's off the general fund number?
It's off the general fund number.
Okay.
And then because you're sixty percent is the same math. Um, at one time it was up to forty four million. I don't, I'd have to go back and do the math. I've not done that.
Uh, no prob- okay, so I wanted to make sure, so you're just coming off the, just the one, because I have the other numbers, okay, uh.
Because that's your operating budget. They don't let you include capital into that. It's it's.
Right, and that's where you said you were coming, why you said you come straight off of property tax for the other two funds.
Yep.
Uh, okay, all right, that answers my questions for the moment. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the statutory limit or is that? We can move on.
Quick question about senior discounts. I see from other RFAs that. A senior discount applies to the benefit charge.
Yep.
Okay.
And it does, it it does in our case too. If they, if they have the documentation with the county. Um, and applied for their discounts, it's automatically applied to the benefit charge. Um, and housing authority properties are exempt based on statute, so we follow all those same categories and and the data we get from the county. Um, if they're getting a property tax discount, um, they get the same discount on the benefit charge.
Yeah. If in the doc, it says that the percent is the same, whatever the county is doing for the regular property tax, are they get the same off the other?
And that and that's and that's all pre-done with the data we get from the county and and the the certified assessor roles prior to us. Doing the rest of the work, um, before we give the information back to the county.
So just for clarification, in in reference to the senior discount, they seniors have to opt in to get that discount.
That's correct.
For property taxes, do they, you said, you referenced that if they are getting a senior discount for the taxation on their property taxes, you would automatically? Okay, good.
So in other words, they don't have to ask for a senior discount on the benefit charge. If they do the work on the property tax and have that established with the county. And you know, that that I, and I believe if I remember correctly, that they have to um, make sure that documentation is put in annually for that. If the county has record of them getting a discount, that's automatically applied to the benefit charge. There's no additional work that the taxpayer needs to do um, for that discount to be applied to the benefit charge.
That's good.
Um, call demand, I know this was a conversation that um, or some information that that has been requested. Um, here's twenty twenty one, we're in twenty twenty two, right, twenty twenty one call demand. Um, of of our respective contract cities and the RFA. Um, and so just for, to make sure everybody knows, the city of Linwood's independent call demand. Is part of the RFA total.
Right.
You know, and then um, we, I put in Mill Creek, because I know what Mill Creek's annual call demand was for twenty twenty one, that's what it is. So that's the current call demand. Um, and and we've we've given you what the city of Linwood's call demand is. Um, just in in Mill Creek, so.
Um, no, I appreciate it because it went right into my formulas, so.
Yeah. So realize Linwood, Linwood's part of the RFA total. Um, and mm, and Mill Creek, they're not part of us officially until August first.
Oh, that's.
This is their twenty twenty one call demand.
Uh, okay, I will admit, I missed that, so okay, so I should take out call demand, I need to subtract out the Linwood number. In a, or at least I can't include it, uh, your thirty three twenty includes the sixty eight thirty two?
Yes.
But not, yeah.
Twenty one sixty.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll I'll change the math on that. Thank you.
So, so the the total for Breyer, Edmonds, Mount Lake Terrace, Linwood and Mill Creek is twelve thousand. Five hundred and nineteen calls. The difference between that and the thirty thousand is seventeen thousand eight hundred and one calls, so. Then the balance would be seventeen thousand calls and unincorporated to Homage County?
So, yeah, would, but so if you were to take, yeah, something like that, I'd have to go back and do the math.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's just.
But we, we in the RFA and we include you in that, we ran over just over thirty thousand calls in the RFA in twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
Of those calls, four hundred and tw- four hundred and forty two are Breyer, fifty four and change in Edmonds, twenty nine, and then I gave you Linwood. And then, and then, so those are the breakdowns of the total, not including Mill Creek, because Mill Creek wasn't part of us. I just wanted to give you what Mill Creek's twenty twenty one numbers are.
I see, okay.
As a result of, they're going to be part of the RFA. Um, August first and we'll have their numbers um, starting um, in twenty twenty three. This is probably a confusing slide and I apologize. But I I, I I wanted to make sure, I I know that the question of of call demand and and the respected areas and and. Um, that's what I have.
No, I think that, I mean, I know I asked specifically on this, so uh, I do appreciate that. The number I have is total calls across this sheet, now making the adjustment that Linwood is in that thirty three twenty. Uh, is a little lower forty one thousand. Calls for the year, forty one twenty two eighty nine. RFA, so unincorporated county, I guess the best way to put it is. Uh, or what's not Linwood is twenty three thou- about twenty three thousand five hundred.
So so let me, Martin, let me, let me, so you're, the three contract treaties, city numbers are part of the thirty thousand. So you need it, so you need to take, so I did, I did this really wrong for the logical aspect of doing math out of this. Is the total RFA call demand within our geographical area was thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty. So if you want to know what the unincorporated call demand was, you have to separate. Breyer, Mount Lake Terrace, Edmonds and Linwood.
Right.
And then you will have what's unincorporated, Snowmish County.
And and Linwood has to come out as well.
Yes, correct.
All right, all right, I will, that's going to change the numbers quite dramatically.
I bet it does.
Yes.
And Edmonds too, right?
For yourselves, for yourselves, one point four six percent of the calls are Breyer. Of that thirty thousand denominator. And if you look at just the Breyer, Edmonds, Mount Lake, City of Linwood total. It's two point five percent of that total, so we're between one and a half to two and a half percent. Regardless of whether you use the thirty thousand or the smaller twelve thousand five hundred number.
Well, so I guess I have, I have a set. One point one two four percent of all calls. If I've adjusted my formulas correctly.
So, um, you've guys seen this before, if if Breyer was part of the RFA today. Um. And and I'm able, I was able to calculate what your benefit charge would be because I have the partial data from the county for the city of Breyer. Um, our fire levy, our general levies at ninety three cents, our EMS levies at forty two. The benefit charge is an equivalent in within the city of Breyer of of eleven cents. Um, once again, you can see the numbers and the the total would be two point four nine nine. Basically, two point five million and equates to a dollar forty six. The reason it's not. Um, the dollar fifty one is because of the benefit charge. And the predominantly sixty in our model, about sixty six percent of the benefit charge is proportioned to residential properties. And the remainder of the benefit charge is proportioned to um, commercial multifamily and um, mobile homes. And so that's another benefit of the benefit charge is, is some of the burden of fire protection. Um, is to those higher risk. And and higher users of um, of personnel and equipment if there is an event in those in those improvements to property. Um, and you've seen that before, I just wanted to show you again. Um, so. This slide shows, um, if you took everybody's. Um, twenty twenty two. Um, levy rates or the twenty twenty two AVs. And then with the contract cities, we know what your contracts are. And we we then said, well, what is your contract's equivalent levy rate? Um, and just ended the math, and so um, the city of Breyer, based on your contract. Um, equates to sixty six cents per thousand of AV within the city of Breyer. Um, city of Edmonds is is seventy five cents, city of Mount Lake Terrace is seventy two cents. The RFA as a whole, um, equivalent rate is a dollar fifty one. That in, and that includes the general levy, the EMS levy and the benefit charge equivalent. Um, the city of Linwood, um, is at a dollar fifty one per thousand because they're part of the RFA. Um, and the city of Mill Creek, um, if they were in today and they've annexed, um, so in twenty twenty three. Um, they will be paying the equivalent rate that the RFA is at. Um, which we don't know yet, but it'll be, um, if we stayed status quo. Um. You would see it less than a dollar fifty one as a result of growth of AV in in twenty twenty two. Um, but Mill Creek will be paying the same levy rate. Um, as the citizens in the city of Linwood and unincorporated RFA. And so, um, this this for the RFA is 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 one of the reasons we're. We're having this conversation is, is um, the disparity now between the levy rates. Um, becomes challenging for the long term. Um. Um. You know, if if I had a resident that's that's in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And across the street, that person is a resident of the RFA. And one person is paying the equivalent of a dollar fifty one per thousand. And across the street, they're paying the equivalent of seventy two cents per thousand, they get the same service level, that becomes problematic. Um, for us in the RFA, um, as we need to move forward with. You know, um, re- renewing the benefit charge or renewing an EMS levy and doing lid lifts and. Um, you know, at some point in time, we'll have capital needs, um, we've identified the need of of info fire stations, um. You know, within the, within the whole service area, we looked at it, including our contract cities. Um, and the need for info fire stations, which and and seismic updates to those stations. Um, which potentially is going to require a general obligation bond. Um, at some point in time in the future, and so this becomes one of the art. One of the challenges that we in the RFA are having. Um, and part of of why this discussion from the RFAs perspective, um, with our current contract cities. Um, um, is why we're having it, so um, I'll go with the next slide. Current cost, I think this is pretty straightforward for everybody. Um, the city of Breyer is at one point one million and change. Um, city of Edmonds with their increase of two FTEs on duty every day, their their contract is nine point four million. Um, city of Mallat Terrace is a two point nine million. Um, the RFA, um, and this is from, um. We we're collecting fifty six, fifty six million and change. Um, the city of Linwood is part of that fifty six million at twelve point eight, so the city of Linwood's. Within their, um, looking at the city of Linwood's AV. Um, at a dollar fifty one, they they're they're contributing to the RFA currently about twelve point eight million. If the city of Mill Creek were in the RFA as of twenty twenty two, which they aren't. Um, based on their AV and and paying the same equivalent rate, they'd be at seven point six million. Or just over seven point six million, um, and they will be paying something very similar to that, um, moving forward in twenty twenty three. Um, so here is if we did levy parity. Um, and I know we've talked about this with the city of of uh, when when the last discussion we had now. Just, you'll see a different number for the city of Breyer, because I just did it based on a dollar fifty one. Um, realizing that we did the actual numbers of the city of Breyer were part of the RFA today, because I can calculate. Your benefit charge, which reduces. Um, really what's within the city of Breyer, so. Um, and that, and that's true across the, across, right, it's not. Um. Because the benefit charge has proportioned to a commercial resident or commercial multifamily. As in the city's case, you have very little commercial, no multifamily. Um, so you see a a total less than a dollar fifty one. Um, we calculated to be, it would have been a dollars forty six. But in this scenario, I put everybody based on their AV at a dollar fifty one, just to be consistent. Um, for the, for the illustrative purposes, and you can see what, what everybody's, um. Um. Cost from their geopolitical area would be if they were paying parity now. Um, and and it it's not hard to figure out that they're all about. Two and a little bit, they're twice or a little bit more than twice, but they're currently paying in the contract, which. Actually makes sense when you look at a dollar fifty one based on the current, um. Levy rates comparison, um, that your contracts currently are. Um, and then we go back to the equivalent rates in this.
Say, Bob, could we, could we pause again?
Yep.
Could you go back? You do the previous or a previous slide to this one. So where where I'm trying to get some congruency is the RFA is reporting cost of fifty six million. And your financials for the general fund are showing total expenses of seventy six billion. So why is there a disparity between what's reported here and what are you, the financials back on slide number four?
So this here is just, this here is just fire levy. So the general levy, the EMS levy and the um, benefit charge. So in the, in the general fund, you're seeing. Not just my levy rate, but you're seeing contract costs, you're seeing ambulance transport fees. You're seeing ground emergency medical transport revenue, and you're seeing some other revenue streams outside of property tax, so. This comparison is strictly what. Um, your contract cost and then and um. And what I get within the fire levy benefit charge and EMS levy. That's why they're different, because I have, um, in the, in the financials that you're looking at, there's. There was four point five million of GMT money in there, there's transport revenue in there, other miscellaneous revenue. And then the um, the contract cost is all part of that too.
Okay.
So they, so they don't, they won't add up, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Cost with an outgoing expenditure, in other words, it costs and expense are the same to me, so fifty six million cost. Versus your expenses of seventy six million are a difference of, uh, well, twenty million dollars, um, so I I guess the the. The definitions are a little um, opaque to me. Uh, when I take city of Breyer, city of Edmonds, Mount Lake Terrace and Linwood, and I just add those four jurisdictions. Total cost is thirty four million dollars. So, I'm I'm trying to figure out, we we say there's seventy six point two million in budgeted labor, budgeted maintenance operation for total expenses. But yet the RFA is reporting fifty six million here, I'm just trying to.
So, let me, let me, let me relabel this, because cost is, I I.
Was gonna suggest, I didn't think that was a great title.
So. So don't look at the title. So here's what this, here's what these numbers are illustrating is. Is you have what the contract cost is, so what you're currently paying us for fire service.
Right.
Is one point one.
Right.
City of Edmonds is paying nine point four, city of Malak Terrace is paying two point nine.
Right.
For the RFA, when we collect property tax. General levy, EMS levy and the benefit charge, we're collecting fifty six million. And then of that fifty six million, twelve. Million eight hundred and six is the, within the city of Linwood, because one of the questions. Um, is, you know, what is the equivalent within the city of Linwood, and so, um. If you wanted to look at what's coming from the city of Linwood, what's what's coming from unincorporated area, you need to subtract. The twelve point eight million from the fifty six, and you would get what Linwood's portion is and what the unincorporated RFA is.
This seems like a lot more detail than we need, what we need is, what's it gonna cost us?
And ca- cost benefit analysis is what we.
I don't care about that, what's it gonna cost us?
So if you were part of the RFA today. And and based on our current mill rates, it'd be two point four, uh, just, just under two point five million. Would be what would come from the city of Breyer. Because I can't, if you were to annex into the RFA, I can't, I can't. Charge your residents any different than we charged for the RFA, based on the formulary in twenty twenty two. And using your AV, what the general levy is with the EMS levy is, and I've been able to calculate your benefit charge. You'd be paying for the money, the revenue coming from the city of Breyer would be two point four nine nine million.
Yeah.
Two point five eight nine, two point five eight.
So the two point five eight nine here is, so let me back up. Because I'm I'm confusing people, I don't want to do that.
Well, yeah, anyway.
So if, if you were be, if you were gonna come into the RFA today. What you're seeing is, is the current AV for for Breyer is one point seven billion. If you look at my general levy, it's ninety three cents, that would, that would bring in, if you were part of our, if you were part of our F A, one point. Five nine six million would come from the Breyer. Uh, for the general levy, seven hundred and thirteen thousand would come from the forty two cent EMS levy. And the benefit charge for. Um, Breyer, based on the properties and the improvements within city Breyer is a hundred and eighty nine thousand. So the total, if you were part of the RFA today. You you would be basically two point five million would come from the residents of Breyer.
Okay. Go back to the other chart, what's the difference, where do we come up with?
So, so the difference, so here's the difference, is I was able to fine tune. So if you look at your, the 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 hundred eighty nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy six dollars for the benefit charge. That is the actual benefit charge. Um, based on the calculations that I did with the county assessor data. And you, and that equates to eleven cents per thousand, the total being a dollar forty six in this, in. In this one, that's two, two point five million and just a little bit over, I calculated this because I didn't have. The benefit charge for Edmonds or the benefit charge for Mount Lake Terrace, this is if everybody's paying a dollar fifty one equivalent. For the illustration purposes, what you had, so the slide I showed you at the two point four nine nine. Is what the city of Breyer would bring in revenue to the RFA if you were part of us today. And that's, and that's, that's, as, that's accurate, right, the benefit charge is, I've done the calculations with the parcel data from. The city of Breyer, and that is a real number based on, on our formulary. Um, so if you were in, that's what it would be today.
And that's not gonna change. Contract versus RFA, the number will be the same, you're gonna charge us the two point six.
I I think, I think that that that's our challenge, is we need to get. We need to get to levy parity at at some place, and once again, I'm I'm part of the staff, I'm not part of the elected body. Um, but that's, that's the challenge we're up against, and so, um, if we stay under a contract. Um, and and renegotiate the terms of the agreement, um, it'll be far closer. Um, if not at the parity rate, um, versus where it is today. So, um, and and there's, there's more to talk about about that, because. Because I I also understand that the way, the way this is working out, that the city of Breyer. Is is just over doubling what their contribution for fire is.
Right.
Um, and I actually know what. Because I already have expenses for the city of Breyer, city of Malak Terrace, city of Edmonds. I already know what your costs are, and so we've done some calculations to show. If we're staying status quo, in other words, just maintaining what we currently have. Um, that, that we can actually reduce the general levy. As a result of our current contract cities annexing in, and I I can, I can illustrate that to show. Uh, because the reality is, is this isn't, I want to make sure this isn't a money grab on behalf of the RFA, right? Um. We know if if the city of Breyer annexes in, that the dollar amount we receive is higher than the contract. And as a result, if we're gonna run status quo within our operations. Um, I can actually reduce our general levy equivalent to. The additional revenue that's coming in, and I I can illustrate that and show that.
Yeah, but wasn't that like two cents?
I think it was, it was between two and four cents. Um, it's, it's, we get about four hundred thousand per penny. Um, and so it's, it's, it's right around three, three and a half cents at the end of the day. Um, so. And then if you bring in malt like terrorists, you bring in city of Edmonds, those numbers are drastically different, for instance, the city of Mill Creek, when we did the analysis. Um, it was able to reduce things across the world by seven cents, so, um, it's all, it's all relative based on the size of the agency coming in.
Yeah, so, all right, so, yeah, admittedly, these sheets. Really made it hard to figure out where the numbers were and which things summed up total numbers versus, I mean, to what Don was asking, so. I've been trying to, as we talk, try to adjust my spreadsheets based on now understanding like. The fifty six million is a roll up number, some other things like that. If I had this right, and I think Don and Dave, maybe you've done today's. It, so, setting aside some nuances of base, there's a certain level of cost to do business and all that. Uh. At our four hundred and forty two calls per year. Across the RFA with, I think, all the adjusted numbers, I have us at one point three six percent of all total calls in the RFA. So that, is that matched to what other, anybody else that was doing that count, I have the total number at thirty two thousand four hundred and eighty. Total calls, I think I've subtracted out based on. What I needed to do, which was frankly, pull out, I had to pull out all the Linwood, Breyer, Edmonds and M L T numbers. And then this is including the Mill Creek for sake of, uh, discussion, which actually now I realize I don't have. That's problematic, because we don't have their revenue in the other, so may change that, comes to one point four six percent. I'm not just, I'll leave Mill Creek out for the moment.
I was at one point four six, that's what I had.
Uh, that's where I'm at, I'm out to three digits, so one point four five eight.
Yeah.
So, fair enough, so we're on the same number then. Um, percent of the revenue, currently, we pay two percent. So, you know, two percent off of the number, and then when you look at. What this just shows, we will be four point six percent. Of a number in that doubling, okay?
Correct.
All right, so we we match out there on that front.
And Bob, one more time, that that fifty six billion for the RFA, does that include? Does that include a roll up of the city of Mill Creek, or is that Mill Creek number just thrown there as a?
I put Mill Creek in, that Mill Creek's not rolled up into that.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
And I kept, I did keep it separate.
Yep, okay, so that's just there for color, all right, got it.
Well, it's there because now they're part of the RFA.
Right.
And I wanted to bring what, what their, their demographics, because. If you ask for the demographics that we currently have, my, my assumption would be is you want to know the demographics of who are becoming.
Right.
And and I, and I do apologize, I get that this is confusing, um, and I apologize, um, for that.
Well, I appreciate your, your clarifying, but I've been living in Excel spreadsheets and this, uh, it'll help a few things. I I do want to go back, Mike, to your question, there's an awful lot of detail more than we need, but. I've been, I've been looking at these numbers with a little different perspective and trying to figure out. Uh, should we just, uh, uh, accept the the levy rate as proposed? Or is there, is there another way of looking at these numbers based on our contribution to the RFA based on? Well, our square miles, our service area, uh, total property values. Um, frequency of call, service demand, our population, et cetera, there's some formulas that would allow us to be proportionate. In terms of our contribution to our, the RFA, along with city of Mill Creek, based on some of those demographics, so. Um, I've I've done a lot more detail than perhaps what Bob is sharing here, but I just wanted to sort of chew up what. Some of the calculations could be behind the scene compared to what's being proposed.
When I think to Don, what you're saying, though, you have two choices, or we have, if we were negotiating on this, you can either join the RFA, and you got some numbers here, and you've. You're you're just gonna get what the RFA numbers are, there's not a lot of flexibility, or we say, which is something I've been at least wanting to work through the numbers and understand is. You work from a uh, contract perspective that says, look. We have this number of calls, we have no business, it does skew our numbers in a way, but is there a reasonable? Uh, amount that we would pay, I definitely agree, the number comes up, I've always said that with, uh, the chief. Uh, and, uh, and all that, but, you know, does that show something a little different in that context, knowing where we are in the calls? And so, but that's the only other way to do it, is if we.
Agree.
Could reach a better agreement, okay?
Agree.
So I don't know if if the, if the council's interested in this, but here's, here's our, our five, six year outlook. Um, if we stayed status quo, not doing any levy, not taking it, or doing any levy that lives. Um, and not capturing bank capacity, just for full transparency, as a result of of, um. Of establishing the benefit charge, um, our general levy was at a dollar twenty eight. Um, and as a result of the benefit charge. Going in the general, as a result of the patches of the benefit charge and the general levy going to a dollar. Um, the RFA and the general levy has some bank levy capacity as a result of doing that. And so that's when we talk about bank levy capacity, that's what I'm referring to here, and. Um, the scenario I'm showing you, based on, and this is, this is from our budget conversation for twenty twenty two with the board. Um, this is illustrating no levy lid lifts. And no increase in bank levy capacity, it takes the one percent in property taxes, um, we get about one percent in new construction. Um, and it takes into account an increase of the benefit charge at two percent. Um, and so you can see, um, what it does for the benefit charge equivalent rate, um, the fire levy, the EMS levy and what it does. Just for South Colony in its of itself. Um. Sorry. If we brought, and this is, this is an example, we showed Mill Creek, so if we bring Mill Creek in. Um, and if you can see, we're in twenty twenty two, we're a dollar fifty one, if Mill Creek were part of the RFA. We incorporated Mill Creek's expenses into, um, our model. Um, brought in their revenue stream, and and what we did is, is. We went and made sure that our ending cash balance in twenty twenty six was equal in both scenarios. Um, the RFA, um. Um, to maintain status quo, in the scenario that we talked about our twenty twenty two budget. Um. We were able to drop the, the, our revenue, and we did this in the general, in the general levy, um, down. Um, seven cents. Um, as a result of the city of of Mill Creek annexing in, um, and that maintained our status quo. Um, as we were talking about, we did the same work for the city of Breyer, we go from a dollar fifty one to a dollar forty seven, it's about four cents. It's actually just a little under four cents, because we rounded. Um. Um. Uh, if we looked at all our current contract cities annexing into the RFA. Um, this included the city of Breyer, this does not include, um, Mill Creek, by the way. If we brought in the city of Breyer, city of of Mount Lake Terrace. Um, and the city of Edmonds in. To ma- and this is really easy, because we already have all your expenditures in our budget. And to maintain status quo, uh, based on the scenario we talked about at the very beginning. Um, we could go from a dollar fifty one equivalent to a dollar twenty three equivalent. And have the same revenue stream, um, and cover the same existing, um, operations that, um. We currently have in the RFA today. Um, and then, and then the last page, just, this is the process of annexation, just for. Um, it's, it's part of the conversation that we're having, um, if the city, if the city. Um, here's the steps of the cities to move forward on annexation, the steps associated with moving forward with an annexation. And that's really what I have, and with that, if you guys are okay with it. I'll stop sharing so we can actually see each other and continue to answer questions, um, and have continued conversation.
So thank you, Bob. Um. And so the citizens of Breyer have, um, we all know that our assessed values are, have gone up significantly in the last few.
Um, and so the citizens of Breyer have, um, we all know that our assessed values are have gone up significantly in the last few years. Um, and the the fact that those assess values have gone up and the fact that we do have typically larger lots and larger homes. That doesn't necessarily um, work for the best for us with respect to these um, costs because our values have gone up. Is that right?
I think that's, that's one of the, yeah. So I think um, I did some of that math earlier, and I guess it's. I don't know if this is, as I looked at what the, what the the initial contract in two thousand and five. And Mara, I don't know, this is probably more than where you were going is, is in two thousand and five. Um, the city of of Breyer's A V was six hundred and three million and change. The current, the contract cost was six hundred ninety-four thousand. Um, fast forward to twenty twenty-two. Um, the contracts, one point one million and some change. Your A V's one point seven billion. Um, and and you can do the math for the changes. Your A V's gone up a hundred and eighty-four percent. The cost of the um, existing contract's gone up. Sixty-three um, percent over that seventeen-year period. Um, I did do some math and and Mary, you're right. Over the last six years, the. City Breyer's A V is actually doubled. Yeah. In in the last six years. Um, and I I see the city of Breyer's A V continuing to rise. Um, um, as things go, I think the city of Breyer is unique in Snoamish County. Um, I think the way the city's been built, and I think there's a desire, um, and I think that's gonna continue. Um, and probably outpace most of the other areas in the county as a result.
If if we had one equate, one part of the equation that was changing like that, the problem is, is we're the lowest. Volume and driver of any of the calls per capita, and we have some of the highest assessment values. So we're getting double whammied is my concern here, is that we're getting bid on both ends. And that's just when you look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I I I I I understand it because we've, we 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 had this same. The same conversation with with the city of Mill Creek during the conversation with them. And I guess, I guess one of the things that that we were looking at and. And um, is is if the roles were reversed. Um, I'm not sure where the city of Breyer would be if we were getting a deal where the residents of Breyer were paying a dollar fifty-one thousand for the same. And we were a contractor to you getting the same result for sixty-six cents, would that be continuing? And. My gut tells me probably not. Um, and and so. I I, this is, this is a complex issue. It's a big deal. Um, and. You know, and there's two sides of the house. I get where the city's coming from. I totally understand it. And. Um, and I have a lot of respect for it. And 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 I think it's, it's probably not hard. Um, to figure out where the RFA sits on it. And and the question is, you know, where do we go from here? And and we're staff. Uh, the the conversation really resides with the elected body on my side. My goal here today was to make sure that you guys have. As much information as you can and as much information as we can give you. Um, and if there's additional information that that that, you know, you guys need or want, we want to make sure you have. And 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 we're, and I want to be really candid. I'm I'm not trying to slant this in any way. The facts are the facts. Um, and we want the city of Breyer to make decisions based on the best information we can provide you, at least from our perspective. Um, and um, and and then, and then move forward where we need to move forward. And and like I said, the. We're showing you what we have, and and there's a, there's a larger conversation when we get to, you know, where does this end? Um, and and that's where my board comes into play and a dialogue between the two, the two. Um, governing bodies can can continue to have that dialogue at some point in time and and hopefully in the near future. Um, as we go down this path, because one of the things, one of the things that we looked at when we, when we had a conversation with with the mayor and and Paula. Um, was one of the things that that we're cognizant of is is the election cycles, right? Next year. Um, there's a lot of folks up for election. Um, and so we know when the current contract expires. Um, and and, you know, I don't think we want to make this a political football. Um, I think we want to do what's right. Um, at the same time, um, you know, it it's not easy to say. Fire costs this if the city were to move forward with with moving towards annexation. You know, there's a lot of conversations that need to be had with the public. And the citizens of Breyer to let them know what's going on, why it's going on, and some of the rationale behind it. There'll be some, some conversations, I'm sure. Um, very similar to to Mill Creek. Um, um, and and that takes time. And I know the contract doesn't expire for. To two years and six months, but I've also done this long enough to know six years and or two years and six months goes by really, really quick. Um, and at at the end of the day, the city of Breyer need, we want to ensure that the city of Breyer residents have fire and EMS. Um, obviously, we're proud to provide service to the city of Breyer, um, and want to continue to provide service for the city of Breyer. Um, but we don't want to get to the end of the game and say, now what do we do? And say, here's the contract. And where's the money coming from? Because doubling things, the city of, the city of Mill Creek couldn't do it in the general fund. Um, I'm not so sure the city of Breyer can do it in the general fund. And so we don't, we don't want to get anybody pinched like that. We want to have a. A continued dialogue to make sure that, um, you know, obviously. We want to maintain being your provider of of firing EMS. I think the relationship's been solid and strong and hope it, and it will continue. Um, but um, there's a lot of conversation, decisions that that you guys are gonna have to grapple with. Um, and we're here to provide as much information as we can. Um, and at some point in time, I'm sure the mayor will be reaching out the chair of the board to have formal conversations with um, my board of governance.
Bob, is the only reason you haven't been pinched by the auditors for the disparity because we have the contract?
I I think that's, I, I think that's part of it, Paula. And I think when we asked the the auditor to look at that, it was several years ago. And the disparity wasn't near what it is today. Um, and so um, I'm, I'm not one to to. You know, wave a flag and have the auditor go look at things like that. But but that is a a a conversation that at some point. Um, I'm not sure where that lies. I know the last time they looked at that um, looked at. The contracts and and that whole conversation associated with, you know, does the contract cover the actual costs and all those pieces? Um, you know, the auditor was okay with the methodology we used. And okay with the cost based on how we broke it out. Um, things have changed. The RFA is now formed. That was prior to the formation of RFA. Um, and there's other factors that play into that, that that, um, I'm not sure where the auditor would go right now. And. If any of you dealt with auditors sometimes.
But I mean, you know, so there's a standing contract. So I think it's kind of where it is at point. But things change now. If there's a contract in place that people have negotiated, let's say, just aside the RFA front. And it is based on a rational and thought-out set of numbers, I suspect auditors would be. Uh, okay with that, because I don't think anybody's gonna be like, we're, nobody's asking for a free ride here. I don't think the city of Breyer is thinking that way either. Um, we understand that this this number and where it's at, I mean, inflation, everything else is outpaced even faster than where that contract was. Um, if everybody went back ten years, there would be some escalators a little differently calculated. But um, anyway, so I think that to the auditor thing, I think that. No matter what comes about is gonna be a fairly defensible thing, just knowing where the parties need to be on such a situation. Unless you want to give it to us for a million bucks and we already decide that ain't happening.
Um, so, yeah. Uh, the other thing I would say is I I think it's important when the con, when we first started this con, the contract with the city of Breyer, it was. I mean, things were great. The 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 contract was was. Um, I think if you, if you go back and do the math, it was, it was um, significantly higher in association with your A V. Um, we based it on on several things. You guys, you guys in the city of Malt Lake Terrace were the first in to start the regionalization project. Um, it allowed us to get, you know, three, three-person staffing at both Station eighteen and Station nineteen, added paramedics of those stations. So there's a lot of things that got us started. Um, at the end of the day, it's just seventeen years have gone by. A lot of things have changed. There's a lot of growth happening. There's a lot of growth that's gonna continue to happen in our region. Um, and um, and and the dynamics have just changed, which is requiring us to sit and have this kind of a conversation. And look at where the future lands and 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 how we get from A to Z. And um, this is part of that, part of that conversation.
I am encouraged by uh, your candor and your willingness to discuss this whole situation with us. And I at least would speak for what I'm hearing is that. Breyer wants to be able to pay their fair share. But recognize the disparities between service requirements in the in the system. So I think we've had a lot of work to do, but I really appreciate your presence and your stance on this, uh. Uh, Chief.
Also, Chief, I mean, I think to even piggyback a little bit, Mike, one of the things I did want to share is that uh, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago last workshop. The idea, and I think based on feedback from council, that we're gonna put a council small. Finance committee, for lack of a better term, together for a little bit here. We've got several things on our plate we have to deal with and look at our long-term health financially. Uh, this is a very key factor in that. Uh, we have our police department to worry about, obviously, and have those all factored in. And just this one lone thing, right? As we start looking at all the numbers, there's a lot of things to munch back and forth. Uh, it did seem very important that we. Start digging into that and start putting our own things together. So uh. I guess that's just my way of saying, we see this as a very serious thing. It needs to be accounted for, and we have to understand where we are sitting as well. So uh, there. Uh, is definitely from the council's perspective, I think, uh, concerted effort here to try to really pack all these things and understand it. It's. It's kind of a paradigm moment uh, at this moment for our uh, city. You know, it's just one of those inflection points where there's just enough happening and coming together. Uh, and in, I would say, prior to. Current and the past, the most recent, you know, with Bob as mayor, prior to that, we kind of just kind of floated through. Running our city and uh, not necessarily in the best way. And, you know, uh. These times require us just to buckle down on a few of these things. So that's what we will be doing on our side. So I've. You know, you're certainly getting all the feedback from us, but at the same time, we are taking it quite seriously.
And 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 I guess I I'll reiterate, if if there's anything we can do from from our side to provide information and and. Continue dialogue, we're here. Um, and and, you know, the mayor, mayor's not afraid to call in, nor is Paula. Um, and and we'll make ourselves available and um, and and get you the information. That you need to to help inform the decisions you guys move forward.
All right. A lot of great information tonight. Any last questions of council members?
Val's got one.
Okay.
They talked initially about tying in with Mountain Lake Terrace in this process, and I wondered if we could have an update on where they're at.
They're kind of on their own path. Um, I did reach out to them, but um. We, I I originally thought that tying it together with them as far as publicity would be a good idea, but. Um, I'm, I guess I'm being more proactive than they are at this point in time. And so we're kind of venturing off on our own.
And admittedly, I see us as, you know, we're, we are so unique compared, I mean. I, that's it's us and everybody else, but if you look at Malt Lake Terrace and Edmonds, they have so much commercial. They have all these other pieces. Now the whole picture is. And we just, even chief noted it, right? We are so different from all the other ones. Even Mill Creek has all those other. Pieces and factors. Um, and so when I started unpacking Mill Creek, I'm like, well, okay, this. I'm seeing how this is flowing in their world. And plus, they had, what was it, District Seven or something? Uh, very untenable numbers, to be perfectly honest, but that they were being offered, so.
Yeah. Any, any other questions?
Only just a quick, and I don't need to detail now, but is there, uh, Chief, do you have anything, you had kind of in here projections, but you talked about new construction and some things. But I assume there's some other things about how you're seeing growth, staffing, cost overall to the RFA. You took things out to twenty twenty-six. But I wasn't quite sure how much of that uh, got factored into the.
So, so I, so in the, what you saw within the budget was based on the budget conversation we had the board for twenty twenty-two. And 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 I'll tell you what it says. It it shows that we increased Bennett property tax with by one percent. And we increased new construction for us is typically one percent. Um, and then we increased the benefit charge by. Um, two percent. And then I want to say cost of labor. Um. I'm gonna say this, I think it was four point five percent for twenty twenty-two.
Four point five, you said?
I I believe, um, I have to go back and look, but we had a, a little bit more. Um, than three, than the normal three percent for labor. And I want to say that they went four percent in the out years. As a way to average things out. At the time, we didn't know what was gonna happen with.
Yeah.
Cost of living. And we're currently negotiating a contract that's um, a year behind with labor. So. Um, there's some things to go on with that. Um, our M and O historically in the model goes up three percent a year. Um, and then um. Um, and you can see that that if you go on the out years and you see.
Right.
Um, when we cross the line, there, at some point in time. Prior to twenty twenty-six, we're gonna have to do some form of revenue generation, just like everybody does. If you don't do anything in six years. Uh, you know, you you end up needing to either cut expenses. So at some point in time in the future, we're gonna have to. Increase the revenue stream some to cover the cost of inflation at whatever it's gonna be.
Okay, so you're looking at it about six years where that adjustment might need to happen.
Yeah, yeah, or 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 within there, right? So you've got, you know, we've got um, a capital studies plan that identifies. You know, seismic needs for current stations, um, the need to tear down and replace like Station twenty-three, Station twenty-two. Um, our stations that are are well past their life that need to be torn down or replaced. Um, Station twenty at Esperance, Station fourteen. Um, and so we've got um. Capital needs that at some point in time, we're gonna have to address um, in the future. Um, and um, and then if we actually um, build info fire stations, we have to staff those. So there's. There are some, obviously, just like everything else, we're we're gonna have to. You know, the one percent increase in revenue isn't gonna be enough to cover what's inflation's going on with everybody right now. So we're gonna have to do what everybody does at some level. Um, but things that we see coming down the road is we've identified the need for infra-fire stations. Um, three of them specifically, and at some point in time in the future, those will have to be built and staffed. Um, depending on what happens with A V, um, and all that. Um, we'll see where that goes. So there are some things like that we're looking at. Um, but you don't see that in the forecast as a result of the budget conversation we have the board in twenty twenty-two.
And then one last, I think, question for a moment, I hope. Uh, the line item that said value of new construction. And then you had new construction of percentage of A V, but what was that line of the value of new construction reflecting just? Total value of the assets or?
I I I, are new constructions roughly around four hundred million a year? Which is, which is, is where they come up with the one cent, one penny or one percent. Um, I and I can go back and pull what our new construction actually was, if you want to know the number.
Um, I was just wanting to make sure I understood on the, uh, we had the projected levy rate to the slide eighteen.
Yeah.
Uh, it just had a line item that said value of new construction, the three sixty-two. Uh, you know, just it went down a little bit. Yeah, there's twenty-two and then a twenty twenty-three. And I was just, that is for what you're expecting to spend on new construction.
That's, that's our, our added revenue from new construction. Yes. No, that's, that's the revenue stream, right?
Okay.
That's new construction from revenue.
Did I, somehow I had been looking at that for the last two days, and I kept reading that the. Fire numbers. And then when you started talking, that's why I came back to it, because I'm like, that makes much more sense to me. So I got it now. All right. So anything that's new that's being built, you're gonna get added.
That's, that's, that's new construction added to the tax roll.
I don't know where I was on that one, but thank you. Now I am much more good. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna give one last shot for questions. Okay. Well, hearing none, I think we've learned a lot. We've got more to talk about as a council. Um, I want to thank Bob for helping us through these numbers. Um, for his persistence and his good spirit about being direct with us. I do appreciate the candor. It is a huge deal for our city, but providing uh, fire and EMS is uh, is a huge deal as well. And so. Want to thank him and his support staff for for helping us out tonight. And um. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Bob, Leslie and Sean. Thank you very much.
You. Thanks for having us.
Good night.